President.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kaler.
Present. Commissioner Abraham will do our invocation tonight, and tonight after the invocation, we have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Sam Kern of Boy Scout Troop Four.
Father, which art in heaven, Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the opportunity to pray. Father, we pray tonight that your spirit moves and those of us who are victims of the abuse that we sometimes visit on one another. Father, we pray that those individuals who are inflicting that pain, that misery physically, mentally, that their heart has changed. And Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we can pray for that in this chamber this evening. Father, we pray there's so many people here, different walks of life, different circumstances, family issues. We pray that those are healed. Let us be that light that shines, that they will know that we are Christians by our love. These things we ask in the issue's name. Amen.
Amen. Sam, you want to come on up? Thank you for helping us tonight.
You're welcome. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just for one second. I just want to, just in case anybody was wondering why I have this Mayfield shirt on, and I can't believe all these Tillman people are here tonight, because typically when I have to wear this, there's nobody here. So, but it's important to honor your agreements, and Commissioner Galt and I, I took the initiative thinking that, you know, she would look good in blue, since she was a Mayfield cheerleader, that Tillman wins, she wears the blue. Hadn't quite worked out like that, so I'm wearing the red and black. So, but we'll get them next year. Just want to clear that up.
Don't you have a sport coat you could put on now to cover that up? I mean, come on.
It is what it is.
Plant a head.
It is what it is. I couldn't wear that.
Work for one arm.
One arm.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just wanted to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I like that little rivalry you all have going on there.
Yeah.
I never mentioned that this is like his sixth year to wear.
Yeah, I have noticed that.
Don't touch me.
Do we have any additions or deletions, City Manager?
There are none, ma'am.
We have a proclamation tonight for Constitution Week, and I'm going to read that proclamation. And then we have Cynthia Byrd and Cheryl Bendix there with the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, that will speak to us tonight. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Gail Kaler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2014, to be Constitution Week in Paducah, Kentucky, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, and witness where I have caused Heron Two set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed September 16th, 2014. So I'll give this, Cheryl, to you and Cynthia.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to be in it? Pam will take it.
We'll get someone else to take it.
There you go.
We just want to put it in our pocket.
Is that a question?
Not everybody is.
That's right.
Thank you.
We thank you for issuing this proclamation and realizing that this document is an inheritance for our generations, and with all inheritances, sometimes they are taken for granted like our constitution. So it's the foundation of our freedoms, such as being allowed to pray in public and to petition our government and symbol peaceably. So we thank you for joining with the Paducah Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, to bring this to the attention of the public, and we will place this proclamation in the display case in the library. So with your designation, perhaps others will be more noticing of this document and their responsibility to honor it and preserve it. So we have for each of you a pocket constitution and a preamble bookmark that you could keep or give to a young person to encourage them to check out their responsibilities for keeping and preserving this constitution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work that you do every year for the Veterans Day Parade.
We're looking forward to it.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, I have a presentation tonight. If Glenn Anderson will come forward, please. Tonight I have a Mayor's Award of Merit to present to Glenn Anderson, and he's retiring?
Retired.
Retired, okay. Absolutely retired.
Absolutely.
So that's why he looks so happy. But he, you know, you enjoyed your time with Paducah Water, and he did such a great job. Not only was Glenn a great manager for Paducah Water, but he was a great public servant and was in so many community efforts that we did here in Paducah. Could always call on him, and he would step right up to the plate. So thank you, Glenn, for your years of service. And tell me again, how many years?
Thirty-six.
And how many as the manager?
Twenty-one as the manager.
Twenty-one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is great community, and sometimes I think we forget that, whether you live in a county like I do, or you work in the city, or you work anywhere you go, and to have the opportunity to work in your community, doing what you love to do with great people, great commissions, great boards, great employees that make you look good, is a blessing, and I just thank you for this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, I've got a recognition here tonight that's really, really special. We have a lot of young people in our audience tonight with their parents and friends, and I'd like to say welcome. Thank you for being here. We've got some seats up front if you want to sit all the way up on the front seat. In February 2013, we adopted a resolution supporting anti-bullying foundations, initiatives, and programs within the City of Paducah and McCracken County. In June of 2013, the Anti-Bullying Task Force formed, consisting of 21 members. Throughout this last year, the task force has worked to partner with local high schools and middle schools with a goal of ending bullying among students in our community. Through our discussions, we realized that we as adults cannot put a stop to bullying in the schools by ourselves. It's the students that know about bullying, where it happens, how to most effectively put a stop to it. The students have the most influence with their peers, the most direct contact with those affected by bullying, the most to gain from putting an end to this problem. The mission of the School Youth Council is to assist the Mayor's Anti-Bullying Task Force in designing prevention and intervention strategies to address bullying of school-aged children in our community. The goals of the Youth Council are to provide opportunities for the proactive integration of ideas and information from student bodies represented on the council related to the type of bullying which occurs, to develop a plan for ongoing assessment of the specific types of bullying that occurs in our schools and communities, in order to develop a strategic plan to address these issues, and to engage the school community, community at large, in support of these strategies and initiatives to foster and enhance an anti-bullying climate in all schools and youth-related activities. We have had tremendous response to our call for volunteers. We have received a total of 127 applications from our city and county schools, and essays from students across Paducah and McCracken County. We are amazed at the passion and the initiatives of these middle school and high school students, and we thank you for your eagerness to help with this project. A subcommittee of the task force has chosen 30 applicants from our local middle and high school that will make up the Youth Council. We are pleased to welcome those students to this council, but before I bring those students up and read your names, I'd like to thank everybody that applied, and it was a tough decision. Is our committee here, Susan? And would you all come up? I want to introduce you and...
Thirty.
Do we have any of the other Anti-Bullying Task Force members here?
Brian.
Brian?
If you all would just introduce yourself to the audience out there tonight.
Sure. My name is Susan Guest, and I'm with Paducah Bank.
I'm Allison Ogden.
I'm Joy Mintz.
So I just want to give them a big round of applause for helping with this. And Allison and Susan Lauren Barks and Gretchen Roof were the committee that looked at all those essays, 127 of those essays, read them all, and made this selection, so I just want to thank you. And have you set up a meeting with the Youth Committee? Have you set the time yet?
I think it's by your recommendation. The Governor's going to be in town at the end of the month, and our hope is to schedule it where he has an opportunity to meet with the group.
And we talked about that today, and if the Governor's schedule does not allow that, I'd like to take the whole group to Frankfurt.
Oh, nice.
And to meet the Governor and to have a Government Day up there, so whichever way it works out, it'll be great.
We appreciate your support, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison, Joy, and Brian. So do we have some students here that applied that was not selected as one of those 30? Okay. Hi, thank you. Thank you for being part of this, and I want all those students to know, the ones that did not make it, that we will be including you in some of our initiatives that we work on, because we want you to be involved. I mean, you showed the initiatives to write the essays, and I think it's very important to have you part of this. From the homeschool group, and if you'll come forward, we'll have a picture before you all leave. Rose Mary Halverson, eighth grade, homeschooled. I'm not sure everybody's here tonight. Caroline Johnston, 10th grade. From Lone Oak Middle School, Morgan Guest, 6th grade. Mason Wooton, 6th grade. Brady Shreves, 7th grade. Cassie Morris, 8th grade. From McCracken County High School, Cassidy Courtney, 9th grade. Barton Christmas, 10th grade. J.C. Leath, 10th grade. Emily Perry, 11th grade. Bailey Vick, 11th grade. Kalen Herndon, 12th grade. From Paducah Middle School, Jack Hutchinson, 6th grade.
He couldn't be here.
Okay. Samuel Lambert, 7th grade. Mary Kate Vai, 8th grade. Eli Workman, 8th grade. Grace Denton, 8th grade. From Reedland Middle, Samantha Short, 6th grade. Morgan Taylor, 7th grade. And Evelyn Jensen, 8th grade. St. Mary Middle School, Maggie Smith, 6th grade. Joseph Gilatuck, 7th grade. Abby Van Hatter, 8th grade. From St. Mary High School, Maddie Cook, 11th grade, and Anna Wilson, 11th grade. Students, I just, if you'll turn around here now, I just want to say thank you so much for your initiative and for your passion for this program, and we look forward to working with you in the future. So let's get our picture made.
You're missing students that we didn't call.
And Commissioner Galt is also on our task force. She didn't come forward.
Oh. Paducah Tillman students we didn't call.
I didn't.
Was there another school missed? Paducah Tillman. You guys need two lines? You call.
I called Paducah Tillman. Elizabeth Vai, Parker Belt. Maybe I missed, I called Elizabeth and then I skipped down, sorry. Meg Hancock, Thomas Drew, and Elizabeth Katz. Sorry, the Mayor's a little ADD.
Are there any others out there?
Did I miss anyone else? Commissioners, do you all come on? Get your picture here.
You want us to come down?
We'll get one with all the Commissioners and then one with just me.
Should I get Brian behind it?
Commissioner Abraham and I will get in the back.
I gave it to her. This one's in. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you so much. Looking forward to bringing that to you. Thank you so much. Way to clean house. You didn't come by the store. You know, it's a couple of...
That was fun. Why didn't you get out there, Carol?
They were doing their thing. I was just...
I mean, when, as for the task force members...
Well, I thought you were just asking for that. My favorite thing. I'll tell you later. Thank you. You're right.
Okay, next we have an Eagle Scout project, Sam Kern and Troop Four. Sam did our Pledge of Allegiance, and he also did the work on the Duck House reconstruction.
Mayor, Commissioners, come on, stand on up here, Sam. I'm not going to stay up here long. This is your show. Glad that we could make this working relationship really work for the city and Sam and his Eagle His father and I contacted several months ago, and we worked this option out, and they found it to be a great option for their Eagle Project, and I want Sam to tell you a little bit about what they did to organize and make this happen.
Hello, my name is Sam Kern, and I'm with Troop Four. And first of all, I would like to thank the City of Paducah for giving me the opportunity to rebuild the Noble Park Duck House. I would also like to thank those who helped me with the Eagle Project, and I would like to thank Mr. Mark Thompson with the Parks Department for presenting this project to me and helping me along the way, and thanks again. Here's what it looks like. So do I have to...
That's it?
Yeah. This is what it looks like now. As you can see, they already built the windmill over there. I just had to do the rest of the house, all the roofing and stuff. I think that's about it.
Well, when we gave Sam the house, we floated it off the island a couple of years ago, and it was actually in two pieces, that we had sawed the roof off of it. So they put this back together and really cleaned it up, because there was a lot of smell to it, we'll say. And they cleaned it up, did a great plaster job on it, a great roofing job, and sealed it, so this will last for many, many years. And I think Rick Murphy, City Engineer, who also did part of the engineering on the project, would like to have to say a word about Sam's project.
I would just like to thank this young man, because as you know, as we work these projects, I'm like Mark, where's my duck house? We need to get away from the island. We got everything finished, and I went over to the place where they was working on the project, and I saw the lid off, and I said, oh my gosh, we're not going to get done, and they're going to get concerned, and you know, what's going on with Duck Island? And a week later, this young man completed that work, and then they bring it out there on a trailer, and I'm like, wow, they got it done. So you know what it's like to work under pressure a little bit now, to get something done on schedule, so I just want to thank this young man. It looks great out there, and I'm glad we've got it back the way it is, so good job.
Thank you, sir.
Sam, how many hours did you work on that?
Well, the hours...
How many days did it take?
Many days, all week. It took all week to do this, every week.
Many weeks.
I even did it after school until the night.
I think you'll like to thank Sam personally, so let's walk around and give you a handshake over there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam.
Sam, it's folks like you that make Paducah such a great community. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sam, there were a lot of people upset a few months ago, almost a year ago, when they thought that the duck house was gone and Duck Island, and so you really, it was a great job, man, so I hope folks can, you know, appreciate the work that was done.
He's made a lot of people happy.
A lot of people very happy.
Great job, man.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Captain Barry Carter here with the Firefighters for Operation Warm. Thank you, Captain Carter.
Thank you. Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good. Good.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, glad to have this opportunity to talk to you about a program that we're kicking off. I've got a handout I'd like to give.
I think I may have a note.
Okay, thank you.
There's a note for each of you.
Okay. Share.
Thank you.
What we wanted to talk to you a little bit about tonight was a program that we've kicked off now in cooperation with the Fire Department. It's called Firefighters for Operation Warm. We first found this program, believe it or not, just a few months ago when we attended the convention in Cincinnati, and one of our members come back to me and said, you need to come look at this program, and I went over and looked at it, and it was a really good program, so we brought it back to the chief and laid out the plans, and he was on board with it and been very supportive, so we thought this would be the best forum to kick off our program that we're doing. What Operation Warm is, we buy coats for needy children. These coats are all American-made coats. The good thing, and you'll see in your handout the second page, kind of gives you a little bit of a synopsis of the program. We've actually preserved some American jobs in Sam, Alabama, because firefighters have purchased so many coats to give away, so it's good for our own economy, and it does good for children who needs winter coats. The International started in 2012, and to date, we've given over 50,000 coats away to children. As you can see, Operation Warm has reached 1.4 million children since their inception. The coats cost us $34 apiece, and that includes shipping. They're really, really nice-looking, very well-made, American coats. So what we've done is, when we got to lookings, what we found out was, when a kid has a new coat, they have a lot of pride, and in wintertime, they attend school more regularly, and that gets them the education that they need and the nutrition that they need. And a thing that struck home with me is I was talking to another firefighter at the booth, and he was from Washington, DC, and he worked in one of the poor communities in the city, and he said they got to noticing how many kids were standing on a street corner without a coat in dead of winter, and they wanted to do something about it, and they were one of the first organizations that started working with Operation Warm, that was fire departments. And one of the things that he told me, when they went into that school and gave these kids coats, some of these children couldn't believe that they didn't have to give it back at the end of the year, and so they designed a tag in this coat where... And so they designed a tag in this coat where we can write their name in it with a sharpie. So what we decided to do is, when we looked at it, 96% of the funds that we collect go to buying coats. Only 4% is used for administration costs. So we set a goal, and our goal was to buy every first-grade kid a new coat in one of the elementary schools in Paducah. And we set a criteria, and we selected Morgan Elementary School. So this year, we're going to furnish 73 first-grade kids, every one at Morgan Elementary School, with a new winter coat. What we would like to do, obviously, is, this program is very, very dependent on donations. And we have a website. It's IFFlocal168.org. And we have a link on there where you can go, and Operation Warm has a page for Paducah firefighters. So you can go and make a donation either online, send a check in, however you want to do, and then they send us an email, you know, you had this much money deposited. So we're looking for ways to partner with people, to help raise funds, because our long-term goal is, our immediate goal is, every first-grade kid in the city of Paducah. And our long-term goal is, every elementary school child that needs or wants a new coat, we're going to furnish it to them. That's a pretty big goal, I know. But you've got to set the mark high if you want to accomplish something. So that's our goal. We were meeting this years ago. We're getting ready to start sizing the children. We've met with Morgan Elementary School. The faculty there is excited about the program. And we just wanted to let you know what we were doing. And, you know, if you want to make a donation, I'll be glad to take it for you and send it in, so.
Now, you've already... You've raised enough?
Well, we have.
Okay.
We've raised enough to meet the initial goal.
Okay.
We raised enough because our guys put the money in to fund this year.
Okay.
We wanted to be successful that very first year. So about $3,000, our firefighters pitched in so that we can meet that initial goal. All fundraising, we may, if we get enough funds, we might be able to reach another first-grade class this year. If not, we'll be able to reach two next year. So I was a little worried about how I worded it because I didn't want people to think, "Well, we don't need to donate," but that's not the case. We need every... You know, every donation counts, and we want the program to expand. If you have any questions, I think I've pretty well covered everything. Chief, you got anything you want to add?
What's the address? I see the... I've got the website on here, IFFlocal168.org.
Uh-huh.
Is there an address where people can mail checks to?
On this, when you go to our website, there is a link there for Operation Warm, and you actually mail the money to them.
Okay.
And they're based out of Philadelphia. And on the memo line, you put Paducah firefighters.
Okay.
And then they track that and put it in our account. So we don't have to transfer monies back and forth. So it's a nonprofit, and we have the ability to go on and see how much we're generating, how many... How much money we're collecting at any given time. So we don't mail it to our local, but if you wanted to give it to somebody written out to Operation Warm, we would mail it in for somebody.
So if... Oh, I'm sorry.
And it's $34 cost for one coat?
Yes, ma'am, and that includes shipping.
Okay.
So what's the turnaround time? I mean, if money started coming in now, you could possibly... You have enough time to get coats for...
Absolutely.
Is that what I...
They tell us the turnaround is five to six days, on average, once we place the order.
But you wait till you have enough money for a whole class?
If that would be the criteria that we would elect to move with.
Okay.
We elected the first year just to do a whole class so that we can not have any problems, if you will.
And how many first grade... You're doing first grade. How many first grade...
Yes, ma'am, 73 children.
Classes do we have in McNabb and...
We have Morgan, McNabb, and Clark, and Concord is actually in the city. Concord Elementary is actually in the city. The city limits are not... But they're in our community, so we would, you know, any child there that needed coats, hopefully, we can reach them as well.
Okay.
Great.
Well, you might get enough to do another school or two.
That would be... That's kind of the goal, and that's why I was a little bit hesitant to say, "Yes, we have enough money for one class," because I don't want people to get the misconception that we don't want to do more. But we didn't want to set a goal that was too lofty in the first year or two, that we want to set ourselves up for failure, if that makes sense.
Do you have a Facebook page?
Uh...
What you're doing here?
Just on our website, but Morgan Elementary has added it to theirs.
Okay.
We do have some social media. We've got a guy that's now starting to work on those issues for. So we're starting to get it out. Anybody that wants to put it on their website, we're willing, you know, that's great.
Pam, do we have anything on our city website about what they're doing?
We haven't... I haven't actually talked to them yet. We wanted to get before you and just tell you about the program before we got that far ahead. And wanted to also demonstrate, I think, with the guy's commitment to the program, you know, initially taken care of. You know, we wanted to demonstrate our commitment to the program before we started asking folks for other things. So get an opportunity to get it out there, demonstrate our commitment to it, and then ask for others to assist if they would like to.
All right. I'll send you a check.
Wonderful. I appreciate that.
Good job, guys.
It's a good cause.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham with the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for September 2nd, 2014, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Municipal order tonight, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Application for a 2014 Transportation Alternatives Program," TAP grant, in the amount of $403,156, through the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the Greenway Trails Project Phase Five be adopted.
Second.
Hi, Steve.
Good evening. I gave a presentation over this at the last commission meeting. Certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It's a good project.
Yes, ma'am.
Great timing.
Very, very good timing.
I had asked the city manager for an update on the Greenway Trail. I was on there Sunday at the underpass, so you may be going to do that a little bit later.
I think he's going to do that in his report.
Yeah, let's do that in my report.
Okay.
This is a different segment of it. Rex, Steve?
Yes, this is Phase Five, which is...
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. We'll go on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving an Agreement for Enterprise Resource, Planning, Consulting Services, and Authorizing the Execution of Said Contract." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah hereby approves an agreement with Plant and Moran for consulting services to assist the city..." Excuse me, "to assist with the creation and evaluation of the request for proposal for the upgrading or replacement of the city's current sun guard system in the amount not to exceed $70,840, and authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement for same."
Second. Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Grant Agreement and All Documents Relating There To with the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife Resources and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for a reimbursable grant award for construction of a transient boat dock as part of the Paducah Riverfront Redevelopment Plan." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "That the City of Paducah hereby approves a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife Resources for a boating infrastructure grant in the amount of $910,000 for construction of a transient boat dock as part of the Paducah Riverfront Development Plan. The local cash match requirement is $320,000. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute said agreement and all documents relating to same."
Second. And I've got a question because I was there last. In the grant, it talks about... Maybe Rick can clear this up. It says the grant requires construction of each of the four items. But item number four, the sewer pump out grinder pump, I thought in the meeting we had back in April 15th, I thought it said we were going to leave that off. Back in the... Talked about saving like $90,000,000 in that meeting. So I was just sort of curious as to how that was going to work, if we're going to leave it off. Gets it here, we're going to save 97,125 bucks by leaving off the sanitary sewer system. So was that going to emparell our...
You are correct with the previous, I guess, presentation and recommendations, Commissioner Rhodes. But you'll recall that we did have a, what would it say? A transient service or marina service building that had six restrooms in it and had four, you know, separate...
Laundry and...
Laundry, yeah, and all that. That system that was shown on there was an elaborate system. Whereas we can provide the basics that will just pump out the waste, domestic waste, off of a vessel much, much cheaper. Now, if we do not include that much cheaper system, then we are forfeiting the money because we're not fulfilling our agreement with...
You're going to have... It'll just be a simpler system.
It would be a very simplistic system specifically for that.
Like what you might have found before they took it out at, oh, say, Lighthouse Landing. That's a pretty simple...
Even, yes. I mean, it's not... I mean, the system itself is not much bigger than this podium here.
Well, I said, when I read through it, it just said eliminate the system. I thought maybe a... Thank you. Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I...
Any other...
No.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Ratio Architect Incorporated and Beacon Farmer and Workman Engineering Testing Incorporated for Master Planning and Design Services for a certain tract of land along the riverfront owned by the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "That the City of Paducah hereby approves the agreement with Ratio Architects Incorporated and Beacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated for master planning and design services for approximately six acres of land along the Ohio Riverfront between Schultz Park, between the Schultz Park Improvements and the boundary of the proposed downtown hotel in the amount not to exceed $34,000, and authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement for same."
Second. Any questions? I think it's pretty exciting to have that going for us and to have that wonderful area on the riverfront for all the public to enjoy. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Ordinances introduction. We do not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, Division of HVAC, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "That the mayor hereby authorize to execute an agreement between Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, HVAC Division, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky." "The city shall assume primary plan review, inspection, and enforcement responsibility under 815-KAR-7125, the Kentucky Building Code, 815-KAR-7125, the Kentucky Residential Code, and other applicable law for initial HVAC installations and major repairs or substantial alterations to an HVA system within the geographic boundaries of the City of Paducah. Said jurisdiction is limited to HVA systems installed in buildings over which the City of Paducah has jurisdiction pursuant to KRS-198B.060. This agreement is for a term of three years. However, it may be canceled as described in KRS-198B.6673 and 815-KAR-8100."
Second.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is the agreement that we've had in place for many years. It's a continuation of the services that we provide. We just have to renew the agreement periodically where it gives them an opportunity to review it, make sure it's accurate with the services that we're providing.
Okay, you answered my question.
Well, I was going to... Is this... I understand, this is when we updated our... With electrical code and other codes to align with the state, this is sort of like that... I guess what you're saying, is this new responsibilities or the same responsibilities?
Same responsibilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Change Order Number Four with Bluegrass Uniforms Incorporated for Uniforms for the Fire Department Employees, and authorizing the mayor to execute said change order." This order is summarized as follows. "That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes and accepts Change Order Number Four with Bluegrass Uniforms Incorporated to update and add items to the original contract along with additional items that have been discontinued by the manufacturer."
Second. Housekeeping.
Yes, housekeeping. That's a good way to sum it up, as a matter of fact. I've learned a lot with uniforms in this, in our first actual contract for uniforms. So this is just a continuation of that, of cleaning up language and how we handle things that get discontinued, which is another reason why I'm back here before you for a contract change. We didn't have that allowed in the original contract because I didn't know I needed to do that. So that's a frequent thing, and of course, there's things that come up from time to time that you want to change or add to the list that you didn't have on there originally. So that's what you have before you tonight.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Paducah Area Transit System for Public Transportation Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "That the mayor is hereby authorize to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $215,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $53,750 for public transportation services for the Paducah-McCracken County area. This contract expires June 30th, 2015."
Second.
City Manager?
Just one comment. Paducah Area Transit is asking for the commission's blessing to retain the right to charge trolley riders during times of their choosing, such as quilt week. That would be times when the trolley is being engaged for a special event where it's providing a transportation route from point A to B rather than doing the downtown tour sort of thing that it normally does.
I have a, just a couple of questions on that. The... I'm not exactly sure how long the Paducah Transit runs. For instance, they stop at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock. What... Do you have any idea?
You mean, for the trolley?
For the day, right.
Uh...
I mean, they...
It's on their website.
They start... They... Well, I'm thinking it's around 5:00 o'clock.
I'm thinking 5:00. If not 5:00, it's 6:00.
Right.
Sure.
So, you know, and I hear this a lot. There are folks that work out by the mall area and that don't have cars. And it's been a constant question, why haven't those hours been extended to pick those folks up and make that service available? You know, extend that time to... I don't know. I mean, we can... That could be discussed, but everybody doesn't get off at 5:00 o'clock. And if we're going into a contract with services, services in that amount, those are the folks that the contract is actually servicing. Folks that don't have vehicles or choose to use public transportation. And I, you know, that's... I don't know if it's a fuel thing. I don't know what the reason is behind that 5:00 o'clock cutoff time. But I constantly get that question about that, and rightly so because of the money that we give to Paducah Transit System.
We could certainly ask Mr. Boykin to come and visit next time about that. I'm pretty confident that we would hear that it's a matter of allocating the resources, limited resources, to get the best bang for the buck, so to speak. So it's sort of a numbers game in terms of the amount of ridership demand that there is at certain hours, certain locations, and all that kind of thing. I believe up until just a very few years ago, McCracken County also made a significant contribution to this subsidy that no longer occurs. So they're trying to do, I believe, at least as much with less compared to what they formerly did. But if it's a commission wish that Mr. Boykin come and... But if it's a Commission wish, wish that Mr. Boykin come and, and address you and make himself available for questions, we'd certainly do that for the next meeting.
Yeah, that, so the county, they don't contribute anything to Paducah Transit?
No. And according to our agreement, and maybe they should, I don't think we necessarily want to revisit it, but there's language in here that recognizes that an objective of our support is to, quote, "provide safe transportation to all citizens of Paducah and McCracken County." So there may be some jurisdictional, as I understand it, there's no jurisdiction outside of McCracken County that contributes to this either, even though services are extended out beyond that area. So these are issues that we have talked about with Mr. Boykin and others at, at budget time, but there just doesn't seem to be any easy resolution to it. But if the Commission would like to, to have that, again, discussion, we can arrange.
I think that would be appropriate.
Jeff, we talk about, you know, Jeff Speck's Walkable City. And I guess my question with Paducah Transit is how do they integrate? I mean, there's a chapter in the Walkable City that concerns public transportation. And, you know, I'd like maybe Mr. Boykin to discuss that. And, you know, it's kind of that first mile, last mile, and how a bus fits in with all that, and how we have sort of an integrated system. And do we have that? And maybe is there a way to redo the system a little bit?
Well, I'll, I'll provide him with a copy of the Walkable City ahead of his visit.
Or at least that chapter.
Yeah, that's, I recall that chapter somewhat as well, so, okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College Incorporated for the community scholarship program. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College Incorporated in the amount of $125,000 for the community scholarship program. This program shall, this contract shall expire June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Like the other contracts, there's a little bit more language in here specific to documentation of the, the use of the funds and also, in this case, the source of other funds that support this scholarship program. So that was acceptable to, to the community college, so.
And also, it has the accounting here. Conduct all accounting, period on financial management, and supply an annual financial audit to the city.
Yeah, that's language that, that has been there before, and we strengthened it in terms of disclosure by requiring specific reporting of how the city's funds are spent as well as what the contribution of other participants in the scholarship program is financially.
And it's a good program. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $136,430 payable in quarterly installments of $34,107.50 each for providing general aviation and air carrier services to the citizens of McCracken County and surrounding regions. The contract shall expire June 30th, 2015.
Second.
New language here. By the way, this maintains the same level of, of funding for the airport. I'd recommended that it be reduced in, in the budget presentation, but subsequent to that, we found the means to maintain it where it was. There had been language in here for a number of years, and I will quote, "The airport board will continue to work with the city commission and the McCracken County Fiscal Court to develop new revenue sources so that continued subsidy from the city and county will no longer be necessary." So if that is, in fact, an objective of the city, then I think it's appropriate that we strengthen that with some more specific expectation of some, some action to that direction. So added to that is the sentence following that that says, "During the term of this agreement, the airport board will formulate and advance to the fiscal court a recommendation to create a special district with taxing power." State statute provides for that. And we would like, this is asking or in fact requiring that the airport board study that, review it, and make a proposal to the, to the fiscal court, or at least have a, a discussion with the fiscal court about that prospect.
Hasn't that been done in the past? They've already done that once before.
This will.
So you're encouraging them to do that again?
Yes. Sometime during the budget fiscal year.
Good idea. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter Two Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby amends the ordinance in Chapter Two of the Paducah Code of Ordinances by deleting the residency requirement to serve on the Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority.
Second. Okay. I'd like to talk a little bit about this. We had to change the wording in our, our ordinance somewhat because Riverport Authority Board wanted to have a representative from outside McCracken County. And I think Tammy, didn't they actually catch it there? Both of you all kind of caught it at the same time, that the requirement was any member of the Riverport Authority Board had to be a resident of McCracken County. And because they're trying to get a foreign trade zone, they felt like the appointment of Jennifer Beck Walker with the PAD Board would be beneficial to them in securing that foreign trade zone because of the work she does with the PAD Office and with all the regional counties. So to do that, to be in compliance with the ordinance, we had to do this little change of wording. City Managers, report.
Tonight, we have a, a presentation that Steve Irvin is, is going to head up. I'd like to give a little backdrop to it because the package of items that we're going to talk about tonight, among other things, are, are change oriented, where, where people are concerned should we decide to proceed with them. They, they focus around, to a large extent, our ongoing downtown revitalization efforts. Some of the issues that have been looked at in, in several planning efforts over the years, most recently with the visit of Jeff Speck to the community. Others, I think, are, are drawn from very related issues, but maybe broader. What comes to mind there in this package is a proposal dealing with what would be the establishment of the first bicycle routes in the community. And while that has been under some study for a number of years, it is a component of the community survey follow-up process, neighborhood revitalization in particular, where mobility and movement through the neighborhoods was recognized as one of the things that we would want to look at. So that particular component of this recommendation has a little bit more of a community-wide significance. Nonetheless, a starting point for that could be, we believe, in the, in the downtown area. I want to say that Mr. Speck was brought to town through the PRDA and the wonderment, I guess, as much as anything, whether Mr. Speck would, would agree or, or maybe not agree with some of the opinions that have been formed, some of the study conclusions that had been drawn around some of these issues. And I think, for the most part, he provided a lot of validation for some of these ideas. An example of that would be, for example, doing some trafficking change in the downtown area, such as what Steve is going to mention with both Broadway and Jefferson Street. This actual presentation came about as a result of, of a couple of meetings, including Steve, Mark Thompson, Rick, Steve Doolittle, and myself. So quite a few hours and a lot of thought went into this as what we believe to be starting points in consideration for some really pretty significant changes that we think add to community vitality as a whole in the mobility area, probably more so than anything else. But mobility makes other things happen throughout the community. So it's a very strong, very strong theme and very strong value. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve to make the presentation.
Good evening, and thank you. When Jeff Speck visited in August, he spoke about the walk being useful, safe, comfortable, and interesting, following our ten criteria he highlighted. First, he stated that cities needed to have a network of many small blocks. Paducah benefits from this already, as most of our blocks are approximately 350 feet. Generally, the most walkable cities are those with the smallest blocks. Number two, it is important to have the right number of driving lanes. The more lanes the street has, the faster the traffic moves. A few of Paducah's downtown streets have more lanes than, than they need to satisfy the demand upon them. Number three, cities need lanes of proper width. Urban lane width in excess of 10 feet encourages higher speeds that increase risk to pedestrians. Paducah has many downtown roadways that are 12 feet wide. Number four, cities need to avoid one-way streets. Conversion of our two-way street system to two, to one-way traffic helps speed the motion of cars through downtown at the expense of pedestrian comfort and business vitality. Number five, cities need to limit the use of the length of turn lanes. Number six, cities need to avoid swooping geometries. Wherever suburban, swooping geometries are introduced, cars speed up and pedestrians feel unsafe. Swooping geometries impact downtown Paducah where Third and Fourth Street curve west and become Martin Luther King Drive and Park Avenue. Bike lanes are important. Paducah has a bike culture that is poised to flourish if provided with proper bike facilities. Number eight, Paducah needs to have continuous on-street parking on Broadway and adjacent commercial streets. Parking provides pedestrian safety, causes drivers to slow down, and provides life to sidewalks. Number nine, we should have a continuous shade trees. Trees provide pedestrian safety, create a perpetual narrowing of the street that lowers driving speeds, decreases urban heat islands, and increases real estate values. And number 10, we need to replace unwanted, unwarranted signals with mostly always-stop signs. Four-way stop signs require motors to approach each intersection as a negotiation and require more eye contact from each driver. As Jeff had mentioned, the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee was created in response to the citizen survey. Several committee recommendations were substantiated in the Paducah-Walkable City Recommendations. The two are explore bikeway connectivity, including bike lanes and shared use paths, and two, continue budget for sidewalk and street improvements in the downtown area. Some specific recommendations of Jeff include Paducah Street Network. The first thing we should consider is to revert Broadway and Jefferson to two-way as well as the one-way segment of Water Street. Incorporate buffered bike lanes on Broadway and Jefferson Street. In the map that you see there, on the upper left, is Jefferson Street Two Way Conversion. As you see, the buffered bike lane is on the right-hand side going out towards the West End, is, has a two-foot buffer, and then you have parking on the right-hand side and parking on the left-hand side, and of course, two-way traffic. On the bottom left, you see the bike coming in town with a buffer and then the parking lane, and it's also two-way traffic with parking on both sides. The drawing on the right is the boulevard section of Jefferson Street. I think we have enough room there where we can have parking on both sides. We can have traffic going out and in with bike routes on both sides of that route also. Some of the considerations for Jefferson Street and Broadway are, on Jefferson Street, adding a signal at Third and Jefferson Street, modifying an existing signal at Fourth and Jefferson Street, at Sixth and Jefferson Street, remove signal and add four-way stop, at Ninth and Jefferson, remove signal and add four-way stop, at Seventeenth Street and Jefferson, add always stops. Broadway's considerations include replace traffic signals with always stops on Ninth, Seventh, Sixth, and Fifth Street, then restripe North Water Street to include parking on Western Curb. A warrant study should be completed to justify decisions to modify intersections on state routes. The proposal on the screen is slightly different than the recommendations, as we are depicting the bicycle lane and buffer on the outside of parking spaces. The recommendation from Mr. Speck had the bicycle lane and buffer against the curb. Under individual street design recommendations is to improve the street network, which includes working with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to restripe Kentucky from a four-lane section to a three-lane section. This quite often is referred to as a lane diet. This conversion would include one-way traveling lane in each direction and one center-turn lane with parking on the north side of Kentucky. Under parking recommendations, it was a recommendation to recognize that the parking lots on Kentucky, both at Third Street and Sixth Street, should be considered reserved parking for our downtown Broadway core. This drawing right here depicts actually coming into the parking lot on Fourth and Kentucky and implementing a street, basically a street tree, but also planting trees within the parking areas to basically beautify that parking area. And doing the same in our other parking areas within our downtown area. An additional recommendation is to begin a campaign to return trees to downtown streets with a long-term goal to continuously planted trees along all streets with an average on-center spacing of greater, no greater than 40 feet, or to plant in the existing islands and Broadway. Do not plant bushes or animal mentals as street trees, as these provide a fraction of the benefits of tall arboring trees that form canopies. On the upper left, you can see the building on the 200 block of Broadway, that we have some small shrubs in front of our bushes. Obviously, you can't see the storefront, and you couldn't, certainly couldn't make out the business.
If there was a huggy in the window, you wouldn't know it.
No, you would not know it. So the, the trees on the lower right-hand side are, they're called Princeton American Elms. There's quite a few main streets across the country that are using those trees now. That's an example of what can be used. They grow to a larger height, have a nice canopy, and you can still see the storefront or the, the entrance to the building. So that's an example of what we're talking about, not only on Broadway, but some of our other corridors coming in town and actually leaving town also.
Steve, would you briefly share the anecdote you shared with me about the history of the plantings downtown, how they came to be, and what the thought was, and what the follow-up has not been?
Yeah, certainly several years ago, I'd been told that there was a variety of different species of bushes and shrubs planted at various islands downtown with the idea of watching how they mature and finding out which ones were best for our downtown area. The last plantings were never a complete street tree planting in our downtown corridor or Broadway.
So that review has not really been conducted, much less any kind of a conversion to those that were considered most desirable? In other words, those plantings at Potpourri, if you will, was sort of just left, and that's what we still have?
That's, that's, that's correct. So we have shrubs, we have crepe myrtles, we have a variety of different species along our Broadway core.
So he didn't really look at individual, because, you know, there are some trees that their roots are coming up and actually, you know, tearing up the sidewalk, and of course, this one is blocking the storefront and different things. Did, did he just look at it, he didn't look at individual trees and all that, it was just.
He was not brought in to be.
Really high-level overview.
That's right. Just a recommendation, that's something that we need to do.
So that would involve perhaps somebody that would come in and study that in more detail about specific trees, bushes, what would need to be taken out?
There's a couple of different ways that that could happen. Certainly, you could bring somebody in to do a complete inventory of our downtown area and make recommendations on the planting species you want to go back, or you could step back and maybe look at some in-house programs or something that we could do ourselves, at least along the Broadway corridor, about replanning those, that section ourselves.
Like a Henry Barber, for example.
Right. I'm not saying.
Working with our tree advisory board, coming up with, yes, and using our in-house staff.
Yeah, that's, I was going to say, we have some folks here in town that is pretty sharp in those areas if we decide to go that way.
What you're seeing right there, though, is the value to those trees is hard to discern. It, I mean, there's no shade value, and in fact, it does block visibility into a store.
Yeah, it does.
And it, and they're too small, I suppose, to give much of a bordering impact to ours, such as what a larger tree might do.
For safety.
Interesting, though, when you think about storefront visibility, as we encourage upper floor, upper story living, how is that going to be a similar consideration for folks that reside on the second story, not wanting to look at a treetop? Well, who knows? Things we have to consider, I suppose.
Specifically on Broadway, fill all plant boxes with trees that grow tall and replace all bush-like trees in this manner. Expedite the planting of street trees first along the highest priority development streets. Expedite the planting of street trees first along the highest priority development streets. Broadway is number one, ranked number one on the corridor to do first. An inventory of existing plantings on Broadway and recommended replacement species and location of plantings needs to be completed. Work with the Beautification Board, garden clubs, and others for possible funding sources for new trees should be considered.
That would probably be an example of the type of tree that would provide the shade value, at least, I would guess.
Yes. Just an example of what the start of an inventory would look like. Right now, we have 29 islands within our Broadway corridor that could have new landscaping, tree planting opportunities. And that's from Seventh Street all the way to Water Street. This plan depicts some of the recommendations discussed. The highest priority development corridors are Broadway from Ninth to Water, Kentucky from Third to Water, Second from Kentucky-Benro, and Fourth from Park to Broadway. You can see some of the corridors on this. Obviously, the Ninth going down Broadway, you see the street trees where he's depicting those. You also see the Ninth Street Corridor, and that actually goes up to the Paducah School of Art and Design. He thought it was important to bring that connectivity from that campus to Broadway and then down Broadway. You also see the Fourth Street Corridor heading out to the new hotel. He thought that could be an important corridor to bring people from the hotel directly down Fourth Street to Broadway, so there would be a tree planting scheme on that street as well. On Fifth and Sixth Street, those are corridors that actually come into the Civic Center Zone, the courthouse and City Hall.
Are you talking between the sidewalk and the curb?
That would, that would depend upon actually where those were happening. And I think at that time, you'd have to look at the utility placement also and make decisions on where best those trees need to be planted.
Otherwise, wouldn't it be a lot of that on private property?
It would be, especially if you're going with a larger tree species, it would have to be.
I've got one I'll cut down for a new tree.
Next steps, staff has reviewed all recommendations and has suggestions that the following action items be implemented. The first would be implementation of a two-way traffic with bike lanes on Broadway and Jefferson Street based upon appropriate traffic analysis. Two is discuss with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, propose lane diet for Kentucky Avenue. Three, prepare a landscape plan and implement in parking lots with landscaping and tree canopy. And four, identifies proposed urban tree species and plant on streets as identified on proposed plan. And that's kind of an overview of the things that we've discussed up to this point. And myself is here, but also Rick and Steve DeLittl for any questions, if you have them.
I just wanted to thank you all for the work you've done, and I really like what you all have done. It's exciting. I know what you have on the plan is one thing, implementing it is a little bit harder, but...
Yeah, I think these are achievable goals.
Having all of those to fall into place to make it happen.
On the bikes on Broadway on Sunday afternoon, it was great to ride as if it were, if Broadway were a two-way street, and it really, it's amazing how different downtown looks coming out Broadway. In fact, I rode several times up and down Broadway just to get that view, and it's pretty fabulous, pretty exciting for the city.
Two-way traffic will certainly add to the vibrant of the street life downtown and also give the businesses eyes going in both directions.
Yes, it does. And I noticed there was no business, every business had a sign that's facing both ways. So it won't be that issue.
So the first step would be to get a traffic analysis.
Rick, could you explain the significance of that, especially when we're dealing with some state routes or intersections on the state highways?
I'll try to keep it short. Basically, we have a somewhat of a, what, 70-year history with Broadway and Jefferson being one-way, and all of us in our entire existence, you know, we're trained to this. So if we pursue this, there's got to be this public outreach. There will have to be a time when you can't do it in part, you'll have to do it all at once. So in preparation for that, we need to make sure that all the appropriate devices are in place. You heard Steve mention earlier about taking out some signals. There are four warrants to a stop sign, there are 11 warrants to a signal. So we actually have several signals in town that probably, if we were to do the study, would not warrant a signal. But if you're going to take a signal out, you need to have the documentation that says, okay, we've performed a legitimate signal warrant study, and this particular intersection may only meet three of the 11 warrants for a signal, which means you can take them out. Had that because in follow-up, you know, you might have a situation where there's an accident there, and then there may be litigation associated with that accident. And then they'll say, well, you know, City of Paducah, didn't there used to be a signal here? Yeah, and we actually did a signal warrant study and removed it. So you need to do these things to protect yourself, to make sure when we make these changes for the better or for the good, that we have things in place for those circumstances that we need to prepare for. So those are some of the things that go into these things. They seem simplistic, but then when you start making these changes, you need to make sure that your i's are dotted and your t's are crossed so that when that change takes place, everybody's ready for it. We talked about it, you know, at one time, you know, how do you do this? Can we do it part? You know, can we do Broadway but not Jefferson? So these things need to be looked at more in detail. As we do that, we'll have better information to bring to you all, but this is a starting point.
I do want to say, not to counter any of that, I mean, it's important that we do that for the reasons Rick explained, but our study group here, and this was validated by Mr. Speck, this trafficking change Jefferson and Broadway, we think it makes sense to do it on that scale rather than something smaller or the two separate, obviously, that would not even be workable to do that. So what I would like our starting point to be in the commissioning of these warrants is this is what this community wants to do. Now, help us make it happen. I realize there's going to need to be some public process that precedes that before you're all comfortable making that final determination, but we really don't want to leave any more to chance, and we have to nor pay somebody to tell us what it is we want to do if, in fact, we pretty well know what we want to do. So it'll be interesting to find out if, you know, if there's that level of cohesion throughout the community on this level of change. But to the extent there is, then I think we need to be very action-oriented, pay for the data generation that we need to, but not pay for something that we don't need or that we can already determine for ourselves.
Well, I think in the presentation, there was a couple of points there that our citizen survey reflected that change to some degree was something that we needed to do. So that's given us an idea of, you know, that's given us a move forward. Now, as far as the particulars, you know, that's why, that's why we hired you, man. Make sure we get all that done, and when it's time to do it, we make sure we got it done and move forward with it.
What's your all's phone numbers?
You got mine.
You got it.
That's fine. That's fine.
We will scratch our heads here over the next couple, three weeks on what that process might be and come back to you and talk to you about that, and then talk to you a bit more about what's involved in commissioning the warrants work, so we have a better idea of that. In the meantime, you can be visiting with folks about this and getting some reaction to these proposals, particularly this one here with Broadway and Jefferson and the automobile trafficking changes.
I think the biggest thing on this pursuit is not so much the, I guess, the infrastructure associated with it, it's retraining the community, and that those are no longer one-ways, they're two-ways. The regulatory signing and that information, that can be done easy, it's just, I forgot, I'm driving the wrong way on the wrong street.
And there are some things that I think are well for people to ponder, and the first time you hear it, it doesn't make sense. When you hear narrower, you think less safe.
Right.
But the assertion really is by Mr. Speck and others that narrower is more safe because motors will adjust their driving to the conditions that they're driving under. So hopefully, that's not too much of a leap of faith to believe that that's the case, but I think it's something that people can ponder. And I think of an example about that, having raised four kids and, you know, driven them to neighborhood schools or picked them up, how tight that is invariably around almost every one of those and how heavily trafficked it is, and how you think, my gosh, there's going to be an accident happen any moment here, but it seems like it never does. And what's the reason for that? People are being very safe. And, yeah, they look all around.
City manager, can we put a link up maybe on the website for people to review this? Or maybe even Steve do a Channel 2...
Yeah, why don't we formulate that and come back? Let's discuss this at another workshop shortly, and we'll include that in there as well.
But meanwhile, you all are going to be proceeding, moving forward with doing those steps.
Well, for instance, tomorrow, we do have a Tree Advisory Board meeting, and one of the things on our agenda is to actually look at tree species. Certainly, we have Henry as our chair, we have a landscape architect on that board, so we're going to be starting those types of things.
What, just a question, but what about trees that have gotten large enough that they're brushing up against the buildings and the windows? We've got one or two downtown that...
We would do a duet here, but I think staff would, you don't want to say, staff's looked at that, and that, you know, we have a variety of problems with trees. Earlier, Commissioner Wilson, you talked about, you know, some of the root balls are disturbing our infrastructure, our sidewalks, and curbs and gutters. The canopy of the tree, that's something that needs to be looked at holistically, and I think Steve has talked about that, you know. Do an inventory of the tree species we have, what those trees might need. Some of those trees may need to be removed, and some of us are afraid to say those words out loud and to do that. But if we're going to be successful, I mean, trees can be an impact in many ways to your infrastructure underground, to the canopy above the ground, and make sure we make the right decisions with our tree, I guess, inventory downtown. And that may not suit everybody, but it's in the interest of the downtown area what's best for the downtown. And I think we'll do better by looking at the complete inventory than looking at individual trees and getting that determination made. For example, look at the north and south side of Broadway. If you're looking down Broadway coming into town, you'll notice that the trees on the right-hand side are enormous compared to the trees right across the street, strictly related to shade and moisture. The trees on the south side are shaded by the buildings, and they grow, and they're the ones that's created the most damage. The ones on the north side, they get all the sunlight, they're starved of moisture, and they're stunning. So there's all kinds of things to look at and look at, so we would look at things holistically.
One other comment is, certainly from my perspective, you know, I believe even the trees around the market house, they add incredibly to the quality...
Beautiful.
...place of that area. So certainly, there would have to be findings or something before any type of recommendation like that would ever be made.
I've got a question, doesn't exactly relate to what we're talking about. Does anyone else have a question?
Well, just a comment.
Go ahead.
With the folks you're going to have around the table, the Tree Advisory folks, and these are the type of things, getting recommendations on what to do with what and what needs trimming and what needs relocating, that conversation will obviously open up a lot of ideas. And so I think you have the right folks at the table to come to, you know, get a, get an idea and then bring it back to us.
Certainly, and this group can inventory, there's certain things that this group may not be able to do, in other words, really study the tree to see if it has diseases, you know, and what's the long-term health of that tree. There may, somebody else may need to be brought in for that, but that'll all be looked at at some point.
I have a, I have a question. Kentucky, no, Washington and Joe Clifton Drive. You got it in your head?
Washington, okay, okay.
The other day, yeah.
Okay.
The other day, I sat at that light, and you know, you've got traffic going through, traffic turning left, and in the Washington, you've got traffic going through, turning left, turning right, and I watched this poor girl with a baby in a stroller try to get across by pushing that crosswalk. She never could get across there. Do those things even work? And I mean, when you've got traffic, when you've got traffic, well, I wanted to get out of the car and go.
That's, that might be something that's malfunctioning, but they do, the pedestrian buttons, they do work, but I've seen, I guess, some of folks come up and they just start, they just start...
She wasn't doing that.
No, I understand, I understand, but once it's pushed, it should cue the signal up that there's a pedestrian here needing to cross. It's not to say that there's not a, I guess, malfunction of the system.
Yeah, I think there is there, because I've had occasion to sit there through seven or eight cycles and not giving me a through going from one direction to the other crossing joke. I think that one...
That's Washington, that's Washington at 28th Street or Joe Clifton Drive?
Joe Clifton.
Okay.
At the hospital.
Okay. That's a phone call.
Okay, thanks.
And I...
State signal, by the way, but yeah.
Yeah. Rick is going to give a brief update on the bike path.
Well, he was biking on Sunday. I was actually walking and spent some time down at the tunnel just watching people go through. I just wondered, an update on the underpass. It's very open, it's very well lit, people, everyone that went through there while I was standing there, I don't think anyone even knew who it was. They were so excited and can't wait for all of the Greenway Trail through there to be open.
Nor can I.
Update, the contractor, we spoke today, and he anticipates that barring no interruptions, he should be done by October the 3rd, okay, October the 3rd for that, and he will be substantially complete, will, you know, we'll still be, still be out there working, doing some cleanup work and getting the sod and the grass and everything going on that. But barring any interruptions that we might have from this point forward, October the 3rd is the date, which is a Friday.
And it's Harper?
Harper Industries, or Harper, excuse me, Harper Construction, Harper...
So when, I was on, of course, the side coming from like the city, so when it veers off down into the underpass, that's all concrete there.
Yes.
Will be level going into the underpass, continue out and then up on the other side, all of that's concrete.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. They actually made two pores since you've seen it last. There are 170 feet from the underpass on the city side and about 200 feet on the west end of the project that there'll be pouring tomorrow.
Right.
Rick?
Any other questions?
As I said on my Facebook, I'm even okay, I'm excited.
I expect you to be the one to cut the ribbon on the underpass.
I'll do her.
I don't think so.
I'll be the person to ride through that. I'm okay.
It does look exciting. I mean, people that came through there, I think they, the initial reaction was it was going to be so long, but it's really not. It's just very, it was very open, and really, I mean, I saw, there were so many people coming through that would stop, push their, you know, walk their bike through and then get back on it after they got through, and everyone was just excited.
I don't know if you noticed it or not, but Commissioner Wilson, when you was there, there's actually boxes that are in the walls, and those are what we refer to as cheek wall lighting, and then there's...
There's overhead lighting.
Overhead lighting and that, so it will be lit, and I look forward to us being able to use it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Winner.
Oh, you got something?
Yeah, I do. We spoke a few months ago about the striping over at Tillman, right behind the vocational school right there where Jackson...
You have Jackson and Ohio and 21st Street, all kind of...
Right, and there was, there was an island there years ago, and it's taken up. And talking to the Key Todd and the highway guys, they came out and they put, they put striping down and they put... striping down and they put some signage up, and that, and that's better than what it was. The, traffic is still moving at a, at a, at a high rate there during, during the time that those kids are coming from, coming from across the street, Amel Court coming across. Now, where the striping is and where the crosswalk is, I mean, I get that. You want to try to encourage kids to use the corner, but that's, that, that doesn't happen. So they're coming across. So if we're talking safety, I know that when I see a flashing light, we're talking about walkable cities, and when I see a flashing light, that means I'm going to take extra caution because that's what the light means. When you have kids coming across the street and they're, you know, dodging traffic, if there's a light there, a caution light that's on between whatever hours, like down from my house, McNabb Elementary, there's a, there's a light flashing, lights flash from, let's say, 7:40 to 2:00, whatever. If we, if we had something, if those lights were there, I think it would just remind motorists that school's out at 2:20, and those kids, there are a lot of kids crossing that street, and it's several lanes of traffic. It's right in a curve, so I would, I would like for us to try, talk to whoever we need to talk to, to get those lights up with additions to the, to the striping and the, and the signage that's put up there.
Okay. One thing, Commissioner Abraham, that I understand what you're talking about in that area, and I think we probably have a, a problem times two. We have pedestrians that obviously the shortest path is direct from where they're standing to their home or that. At Twenty-Fifth Street, there's a, I guess, a better place to cross, could be a better place to cross because we don't have so many lanes. So if we could work with the school, too, and try to get the kids to cross and maybe cross over to the Masonic Lodge there at Jackson and then use that as a refuge and then cross that, but trying, where I'm thinking about is in that Y, where, where all those lanes, there's no refuge for a pedestrian to be. They either can make it from the Tillman School property all the way across the street to, I guess, is that the Dollar General Store parking lot?
Right.
Alveline.
Yeah, Alveline, okay. And it's a very, very wide section of which there's no control of Jackson's, let's see, Jackson, Jackson Street.
I'm familiar where you're talking about.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about, the three, you, we have, it's a confusing area because the Y from Jackson Street coming from Twenty-first, and then it's peeling off and going, we're, we've got people stopping and people going through in that area, and the removal of the island, it's, it's strapped there, but even though that's, in a strapped area, it's not a safe place for somebody to be standing midway. They can either cross the whole way and signalizing that. We can, we can, I'll talk with the district engineers out of that.
Well, I understand, I understand what you're...
See what we can do.
Lighting, and I mean, everybody in here has, has a driver's license, and when you see a caution sign, you're going to, you're going to take caution. So, I mean, trying to get kids to cross where they're supposed to cross.
Right.
Good luck with that. But if you put, if you put caution lights up with traffic coming through there and everybody, I don't even, you know, that's, that's a school zone right there.
Right. Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with us pursuing the flash, you know, the school zone ahead.
Right.
And that's, that's not, that's not going to be an issue there. It's just a difficult geometric location for pedestrians mixed with motorists. And probably, we might need a little bit of enforcement, PD enforcement there, because you'll notice that sometimes cars don't necessarily obey the striping because they don't see anything coming, and they'll zip right across. You know, they won't come to a stop and make that left-hand turn and go on to Jackson Street. They'll just, they'll just blow right through it.
Yeah, hence the lights. That, that's why we need the lights there.
Yeah. So that's something that we can pursue, but there again, that will be something with the state, we'll need to coordinate with them because Jackson Street is theirs at that location and ours intersect with that.
And those are our kids crossing that street, so we need the lights. That's, that's what we need.
Okay.
So...
I will do my best to coordinate with, with the highway department, but beyond that, if there's something that you wish to pursue from a mayor and commission point of view, then we can do that. But I mean...
I'm telling you now, the lights, that's what we need to pursue.
Okay.
I'll talk with them also.
All right.
City manager, I have a quick question, either for you or Steve. In the last couple of weeks, I've been asked about where we are on the hotel, and I would have to say I don't know, because in the last month was the last update. Can you give us a quick update?
Imagine what people are most interested to know was when construction...
That's it, that's exactly it.
Really, wow, there, didn't I? Steve, can you give us the best understanding you have of when that might take place?
Get the same, same question all the time. Right now, they're approximately 50% through plans. They worked hard at sculpting all the, all the floor plans and are putting pricing to it now, and, and I'm fairly satisfied with the amount of design work that they've completed. Mr. Puckett told me yesterday that they're moving into the, into the conceptual design work for the pedestrian bridge between the, the hotel and the convention center. And in the last, last two weeks or so, they've completed their negotiations with the, the convention center substantially, and it just lacks board, board approval. So I'm, I'm satisfied they're getting that done. They also have pulled all of their, collected all of their closing documents for their loan because that's, that's really the, the biggest milestone, and that's coming in the next six or seven weeks, they should be able to close on the loan. That's why we did all our preparatory work on the, on the bond authorization, so we can be ready to go with a bond sale immediately after that. So it's not to say there aren't a couple of things that need to get done yet, but they're, they're not insurmountable.
Okay.
Now, it doesn't look like anything's going on, but there's lots, lots going on behind the scenes, and everyone asks me the same thing, when are, when are we going to see them digging out there?
All right.
We're getting closer.
Okay.
Will they wait and tear up, I mean, take out that concrete once all that's done? That's...
That will happen immediately. That's, that's the impediment, because the first thing that will go in, the hotel is designed to be on deep caissons, so that penetrate the ground, so all that will have to be cleared off first. So I expect that will happen this fall yet.
But that won't be done until the loan closing and all that stuff's done?
Until, right, right. They won't, they won't expend any of those funds until after the, the loan closes. But we've had our rating calls with, with the bonding agency, and, and we've approved our ordinances, so, and, and we're proceeding with design work on, on the showroom to get our, our part done in the, in the convention center. There's still some pieces left with, with regard to like the kitchen, but everything's progressing along at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good.
We don't have an executive session tonight. Any public comments tonight? Meetings adjourned. Thank you.